By title.
Okay, can I have a motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Bond ordinance, bond ordinance providing for sidewalk improvements along Hamilton Street in and by the Borough of Bloomingdale County of Passaic State of New Jersey appropriating one hundred and forty thousand therefore and authorizing the issuance of one hundred and thirty-three thousand bonds or notes of the borough to finance the costs thereof and the special, special assessment of the costs thereof.
Okay, can I have a motion to open public here?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, Harvey. Put Harvey Peterson back up so he can go first, please.
Okay.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, no, as I was saying, you know, I've lived in this town for sixty-two years on Hamilton Street for thirty of those years. I just can't comprehend how Bloomingdale can ask the residents of Hamilton Street to pay for something that you've already received the funds for. Okay, we can go back to resolution two oh one eight dash nine point eleven where Bloomingdale requested to the New Jersey Department of Transportation a grant for three hundred thousand dollars to improve streets sidewalks curbs and signs on the street. And April fifth of two thousand nineteen Governor Murphy signed that grant and you received three hundred thousand dollars to make these improvements. I brought this up in the planning board meeting during the revitalization issue, okay? And I was told that Hamilton Street was going to be taken care of in early twenty twenty, okay? I noticed Boston Street all of a sudden was getting complete redone. When asked about that, I was told that there was an emergency on Boston Street, so our street got pushed off till twenty twenty-one. Okay? Now, my concern is, did the money for Hamilton Street go to Boston Street?
No.
Okay, so three thousand dollars, how can you ask us to pay for sidewalks?
Okay. Tom?
Uh, good evening, this is Tom Barati, the Borough Engineer.
Mm-hmm. Eating.
Yeah, good evening, Mr. Peterson. I'm, I'm gonna try to answer some of your questions and just stop me or ask for clarification. Boston Street, just to start from the end, Boston Street received its grant money from the DOT before Hamilton. The DOT makes us spend the money in the order in which it was received, otherwise we lose the money, they give us two years to spend it. And Hamilton had to be done, or Boston had to be done first, so that, that's the answer for Boston. There were some water issues that we took care of, so the, the water and sewer portion of the improvements got done first and then the paving and, and curbing got done second. And that was again funded partially by the DOT. So I, I hope that answers your question on the, on why Boston came before Hamilton, it's because the DOT makes us do those in order, okay? Secondly, you are correct, the grant is three hundred thousand dollars. The cost, the estimated cost for the improvements on Hamilton exceed, our, our estimates are going to be between four fifty and four sixty. So even though the DOT gave grant money to Bloomingdale, there's a shortfall, so it doesn't cover everything. DOT doesn't give a hundred percent grants. So, so the sidewalks, which are the responsibility of property owners, whether you're a business or a resident, the, the assessment comes from the fact that there isn't enough money to cover all of the improvements on any of the roads, including Hamilton. Is similar with Rafkin Road that received a grant from DOT, Red twig Trail received a grant from DOT. Those streets were also assessed for their sidewalks because the grant money doesn't cover a hundred percent. DOT doesn't do a hundred percent grants, that, that's the real answer I'm trying to give you.
Okay, but, because I just saw in the resolution, it said it was covering new sidewalks on both sides, curbs, as well as street signs and pavement.
It defrays the cost, but the assessment still needs to happen to cover the whole thing.
Okay. I guess you have questions, I s- am I happy? No, but you answered them.
Okay.
John, we do have one more comment. They just can't raise their hand, so give me one second.
Is it somebody I can see? At least the names.
I just.
We, we have a question.
If I just need your name.
Cecilia Rovitz or something?
Ritzoff, Cecilia Ritzoff.
I just need your name, your name and address, please.
Okay, Cecilia Ritzoff, fifteen Hamilton Street, hi everyone. I just have a couple of questions to piggyback on Harvey because we're neighbors legit. Um, my couple of questions is, is that I understand that you need the funds and for the sidewalks, so on and so forth, and that you want to try to add sidewalks to the entire street that we don't have existing sidewalks. But my question is, why do we even need them? I, that's what I need to know, and I guess because I just ask questions and the why is not there. What's the purpose of having the sidewalks on Hamilton Street where I walk and run the flats often? Boston was redone, they did a great job, that surrounds a football field and baseball field. It surrounds a recreational center that does not have sidewalks where nine to twelve months out of the year that field is used. There is no sidewalks, the parking is not there. Why does Hamilton, when Hamilton, I've lived here for fifteen years, is pretty much a speedway for the town? So what's the purpose of the sidewalks when most residents come here to walk in the flats and they use the flats to run and what, and I get it because it's convenient, it's great. But why do we need to burden myself and my neighbors and some that don't even have sidewalks and it's going to cost them ten grand over the next ten years with sidewalks that are unnecessary when there aren't sidewalks throughout the entire flats?
Okay, well, first of all, um, I don't think anybody is over, is, is ten grand. Okay? Um, from what the, the spreadsheet that I've seen from, from our engineer. Um, there's existing sidewalks on Hamilton, and I believe when there is existing sidewalks there, they stay there. Um, there is a section of Hamilton which is the lower end towards Van Dam which has no, doesn't have any sidewalks. But we want to complete the sidewalks to go to where Van Dam is, so you are walking on a sidewalk and if you're going up and down Van Dam, you're continuing on sidewalks. As for the other locations by the ball field, I don't disagree with you, but there is, there isn't any sidewalks in that area. Um, and the room to actually add sidewalks would take away from people's existing property. Um, but you're on Hamilton and actually Orchard, Rafkin, Red twig where the existing sidewalks are there. And be honest with you, I've been up and down Hamilton a lot, um, just looking, a lot of them are unsafe and they don't meet the DOT requirement. Tom, correct me if I'm, if I'm wrong, but
Oh, I agree with you there.
When we're doing a project there, um, we want to do a complete project, you know? If we're going to do all the water work, the sewer work, the curbing work, and when we're replacing curbs, we replace sidewalks. Um, so everything matches and meets the DOT spec, so when they come and inspect it, we meet all the requirements of the DOT, so we don't have any issues. Unfortunately, you have existing sidewalks, we're replacing the existing sidewalks and we're going to add to the lower end of, 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 um, Hamilton of Van Dam, so that sidewalk connects to, to Van Dam in a safe way without walking on some of its property back in the road, I mean, that's the whole purpose of it. Fortunately, um, we're, we're gonna, we're gonna complete the sidewalks to where they need to go to, to, to connect. Um, Tom, you can add anything you want into that if I'm explaining it correctly, if I missed anything.
And my apologies, I do correct, I do correct myself, it was seven grand, not ten grand, which is still for somebody.
Don't get me, don't get me wrong, it's, it's high, it's over ten years, and if somebody was to replace their sidewalk that went out, and anybody is free to do that, to go out and get a price from a contractor to come in and replace their sidewalk. But I can, from the experience that I have with Rafkin and the Red twig area, I don't think you're going to get a better deal and pay it over ten years if you choose to do so.
Over ten years.
But now, can I ask another? Oh, I'm sorry, can I just ask another question? So Boston will never have sidewalks because it will take away, just because it's by the field. Now, will Star Lake Road over by Anderson ever have sidewalks over there? Or no?
Um, we did, a few years back, I do not believe so at this point.
Okay. So the only reason why you're going to do the sidewalks in Hamilton is because there are some that are existing, so you're going to continue it just throughout the entire street?
Correct.
And just do that and then, but you will still be taking away from some of the other homeowners, some of their land that does not have sidewalk. So it's not going to narrow out the road?
It's not going to narrow down the road, no, we're going to complete the sidewalk as is. Fortunately, there's one property, I believe, on the lower end of, of, uh, Hamilton of Van Dam.
Correct.
Yes, and they have a double driveway, if I remember correctly down there.
We're the double driveway house.
You're the double driveway.
No, next, next to each other, I know what you're talking about, but next, we're the double driveway house, but two houses away. So, correct, no, you're correct, okay, so it's, alright, so either way, we're going to be paying for it, you guys are voting to do it, and that's it. Over the ten years in our property taxes, pretty much. It's okay, that's pretty much it.
That's pretty much it, but it, like I said, when, once, once you're done paying for it, it goes away, it doesn't increase your taxes, it just, it's the project. Um, the assessment portion, no, but that drops off when it's paid in full, so that's not going to increase your taxes year to year, with that, that's not staying there. That will drop off once it's completely paid.
Okay, so it'll drop off, and then anything else that's assessed in my taxes is what will remain. Uh, yeah, and, and it's a separate payment from your, your property taxes, it'll be a separate bill.
Wide item.
Like a supplemental bill. Or that's separate line item, uh, but it's not part of your tax payment. Correct, I understand, I understand, I'm just making, I'm just trying to understand if it's anywhere else in the flats, like if Boston would still get sidewalks, so on and so forth, okay?
Okay.
Uh, excuse me, uh, this is Sean Sheridan at thirty-one Hamilton Street.
Hi Sean.
Uh, so I have a question, I think Dawn just said that would be a separate payment. What if my, uh, current property taxes are paid by a, an escrow for my mortgage? Is that a, a separate payment that come to me directly?
Um, the, the actual billing will come out of the tax collector's office, but it is, it will not be something that would be paid out of an escrow through your mortgage company, so not, not knowing how the tax collector will handle it, it should probably be a separate bill to you with that payment.
Okay, so you don't know the exact answer on how the billing would be, but it definitely would not be by the escrow.
Sean, what I could do is
It will not be part of the escrow.
But, but, and Sean, what I can do is, Sean, I'll get your, I, I, give me, you, we have your address. Um, our business administrator, Mike Son, and I will talk to the tax office tomorrow and we will contact you and let you know how that's going to be handled, so you have a definite answer.
Yeah, that'd be fine, thank you.
Mike?
I have a, a question.
Hold on a second, please, hold on a second.
I'm on it.
Okay, you got it, Mike, okay.
Yep.
Go ahead, Mrs. Bach.
Hi.
How are you?
Good, how are you?
I just have a name.
Uh, sixteen Union Ave, or the corner of Hamilton and Union. I have, um, when you replace the sidewalks, you're going to be doing the curbing going along, will you also be doing the roundabout part with Union Ave?
Um, that is not part of that project, there's another project that we're working on right now that will be from a, the CBD grant, Tom, if I'm correct there, um, which we got an, an additional grant to do sidewalking from Main Street, like the kebabs, to Oak Street both sides. Um, which will not be an assessment project because we got the money strictly for sidewalks within that grant.
Okay, will that be like a separate, because I know that's, um, Passaic County, will we be getting another, will we be getting another bill for sidewalks is my question?
Not for that, because that is a total grant for strictly sidewalks.
Okay.
Okay, and we can, when we get a grant for strictly sidewalks, we cannot assess the homeowner for that.
Okay.
And that is part of a, that's a, hold on a second, that's a part of a different type grant which falls in a certain zone of town. And, and I'm sure some people ask me why we can do that with Hamilton, Hamilton is not within that grid. Part of Union Ave is, and there's a whole, um, section of our town that falls within that category. Hamilton does not, but that section of Union, Union does, which goes from Union to, uh, from Main Street to Oak Street on Union Ave.
Okay, the second part of that question I have is, I've noticed in the past several years, when it rains, the water comes down Union Ave and it goes down past my house on Hamilton, it floods all the way down. The sidewalk, um, measurement is not very high. Um, and it, it goes in and it floods like where my neighbor Laura lives next door, and it just follows a pattern all the way down the, uh, Hamilton, where it used to never do that. Across the street from my house where Ed's Auto is, is a gutter or a sewer. But it seems like the sewer should be on this side because the water comes down from Union Ave and then goes down Hamilton Street and floods Hamilton Street. Is there, is that part of any thing that we can put our two cents in to add, because I know it's only on the left, the, my side of the road, it's not on the other side of the road. The water does not go into the sewer that's on the other side of the road, but there's no sewer on this side of the road.
Okay, I'll let our engineer, um, explain that to you, this is all, that's all part of the project.
Okay.
And the, and this is number sixteen Union, Miss, Miss Bach?
Yes.
Right, yeah, so part of the job is, if you walk up and down Hamilton Street right now, there's zero drainage, zero, zero storm sewers. What we're going to do is install, uh, several, uh, storm drains, starting, uh, in front of house number thirty-seven and house number forty, which is, um, I'm not sure how many feet in from Union. But that'll collect the first part of water that's running off between Union and let's say the middle uh, of Hamilton between Wallace and Union. Then we're going to install more storm drains around the Wallace intersection because that's actually flooding really bad right now.
Yes.
And then some more drainage.
On the other side.
Yeah, but we're going to be installing it on both sides of the street and in both sections, east and west of Wallace. So we're doing a significant drainage improvement, are we going to collect every drop of water? May- maybe not, but we're going to try to get as much of it as we can to prevent bonding and icing and flooding issues.
Right, I mostly notice it's on this, my side of the road, uh, going all the way down, I do know at the corner of, of Wallace, um, it's on the opposite corner there where the, uh, the corner of the road is the same, the bank's on.
Yeah, all the water wants to go to, all the water wants to go to Van Dam because that's the low point and Wallace acts as a, a small dam, if you will. So the Wallace intersection floods quite a bit, we're going to be putting, uh, a lot of storm drainage in to pick that up. The road will have a little bit of a crown, meaning that the middle will be higher than the gutter lines, so we're going to have drainage on both sides of the street. It's going to be a huge improvement for your street, yeah.
Okay.
A lot less salt will be needed, a lot less bonding and flooding. Um, and again, are we going to eliminate a hundred percent of it? Maybe not, but we're, we're trying our best to get as much of it as that we can.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else, Bree?
Yes, I have a question, I don't know if you can hear me.
I'll just name an address, please, I don't see who it is.
Uh, thirty-three Hamilton Street, Van Orden is the last name.
Yes. Which is our bad.
Yes, yes, that's us.
Okay.
So, I, in the conversation, you said there's, it could pay, you could pay over ten years. Is there interest on that, or is that interest free over the time? I don't know if we missed that or not. There is interest.
There's interest, it's, I think it's one percent.
One percent, and then also, so if you do new sidewalks, would we have the option to ask for a new walkway from the sidewalk to the house? Will they allow us to make that improvement, of course at our cost, but will they allow that?
Um, on other projects, actually, we had a discussion about that today, on other projects that we've done in town, and it really depending upon the contractor that gets the job, some contractors will do private work while they're there, some won't, so I can't guarantee that.
Okay.
But that would be, that would be a separate deal between you and the contractor and that would eliminate the borough of any responsibilities for that portion of the sidewalk if it's going like our, your current sidewalk to your, your front porch.
Gotcha.
Um, it all depending upon the contractor, um, sometimes we, we prefer they don't because sometimes people come back and say, like a year from now and say, hey, uh, my sidewalk is cracking, well, you made that deal with the contractor, not us. Our sidewalks are guaranteed that we're going part of our project, our project are guaranteed for two years, uh, usually. Alright, so that would have to be worked out, specific contractors, like I said, we wouldn't know that till the project starts. I've seen it, uh, but I can't guarantee it for you.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Mayor, I was just informed too that there is no penalty for early payment either.
Correct, correct. Yeah, so, so if anybody's questioning that, um, if it's, you can pay it over a ten-year period, but if you want to pay it in full at any time, there is no penalty for doing that, um, you can do that, so, um, that option is also there.
John, I don't see any hands, and if anyone who's on their phone, if they wanted to click nine, that will let you make a comment, but I don't see any hands, so.
Okay. Okay, can I have a motion to close public comment, please?
I'm moved.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Well, I see a hand again.
I see a hand.
Sean, we'll, we'll go back to him, that's fine, Sean.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I was looking for the, uh, the hand. Uh, I, I might have missed it when we went a little bit late. Was there a start time set for this yet? I know it was sometime uh, in the spring, but
We're hoping to, 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 uh, kick it off sometime either early or mid-April, am I correct, Tom?
Yeah, we're actually accepting bids next week, I believe. And if the bids are favorable, I believe you have the opportunity to award it at the next week's meeting in this month. So the paperwork can take, uh, roughly six weeks, we have to get NJ DOT approval of the contractor and we have to enter into contracts, check their insurances, their bonding. That could take maybe six weeks, so we could start maybe as early as late April, early spring. I don't like to pour concrete before April, but we would like to get started on piping, which comes first. So it's possible mid to late April, early spring, early May.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Okay.
Okay, John, I guess if, uh
We'll do it again.
Yeah, redo, redo them all.
Yeah, ca- motion, motion to close public comment, please.
So moved?
Second, do I have a second?
Seconded.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay, motion for adoption.
They're moved.
Second?
Okay, Bree, local?
Tomato?
Yes.
Delaripa?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Julen?
Yes.
Yasi?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Alright, let's go back to number seven, report of, um, from our committees, from anybody on the council, have anything to report?
I have one thing from Economic Development, so we had a ribbon cutting on Sunday for Computers Inc. It was pretty successful, I would say, I think there's about three additional businesses that'll be opening up pretty soon. So look for additional ribbon cutting ceremonies coming and welcoming, well, uh, welcoming those businesses to the borough. Opening around April, maybe May, depends on when some of these get started.
Okay, very good. Anybody else? Nothing here, Mayor. Okay.
I just wanted to point out, um, a new, um, principal of the Walter T. Berger Middle School was appointed at the last Board of Ed meeting. So, um, I haven't really had a chance to talk to him much, but, uh, he did speak slightly on the meeting, he seemed like a nice gentleman, so.
I believe, actually, Rich, I don't think that he's actually going to be starting full-time, I believe, until sometime in April.
Yeah, but he, I'm, I'm not, effective April fifteenth, correct?
Yeah.
Anybody else? Mike?
Yep. Got a couple of things, John. First thing is, we had a resignation, uh, of our Drug Alliance Coordinator, Linda Bennett. Uh, so we are on the process of trying to find somebody, uh, to fill those shoes. Uh, so if anybody knows of anybody that's willing to step up and take on the role of Drug Alliance Coordinator, uh, that'd be most appreciative if you can get me their name. The, uh, second thing on my list here is the, uh, our salt bay down at DPW has some damage to it uh, over the year, uh, cracks and stuff and possibly slow, snow loads. Um, so our engineer came up and looked at it with a structural engineer, um, and they, they, they made two recommendations, one was a fix and another one is to rebuild the fix, we don't have a cost yet, but it's probably be costly. Uh, so we're looking at possibly doing some type of replacement with that, so myself, um, the mayor, um, and a couple of the DPW supervisors are going to take a trip on Thursday to Oakland and possibly Kinnon to go look at their salt bays, uh, to see what it is that they have. Uh, and then we'll get back to you, at some point, I'd like to also have the council come down in either groups of two or three, just to see the salt shed, I could show you in person with the DPW supervisor, show you what's going on down there, so you're aware of what's happening and, and why the need is to possibly replace, uh, this year, if not early next year. Uh, the other thing we're working on with DPW is that we're going to start working on a ten-year plan, uh, with the DPW supervisor and assistant supervisor, uh, getting the water department down there, combining it, getting, uh, all forces in one, one, one location. Uh, so we're going to pull out that plan I got provided by the town engineer and just start doctoring up and putting together some phases, how are we going to get to where we want to be ten years from now? Uh, what's first phase, second phase, third phase, fourth phase, uh, to get there. Uh, the other thing, myself and councilwoman Hudson run a call, uh, with a, a a contractor that does, uh, social media archiving. Uh, and they're recommending, I know they've reached out to Brianna in the past. They recommend with the Oprah laws now too, Dawn Sullivan can chime in if she wants to, there's a lot of Oprah laws where they can come back and they can request uh, social media or Facebook or Twitter account, the police have the same Facebook Twitter accounts. Uh, they archive all that information, so when somebody does want to Oprah it, we can go back and, and pull that information, uh, through their software. There is a cost to that, I, top of my head, I just don't remember what it is, Dawn, I don't know if you do. Looks like a monthly fee, I remember it was, but I guess can't for life and I can't remember, I don't have it on me right now, it's on my desk. I want to say it was like three hundred bucks or something like that, uh, a month.
It, it was about three hundred dollars a month, and, um, I was quite impressed with, uh, I was quite impressed with, um, the presentation and I think it's, it's, um, really needed.
So I think what I'll do is, uh, bring the GovOps committee in, we'll talk about it with them and then make a recommendation uh, to the rest of the council, maybe next meeting or two, to go ahead and authorize that, uh, if we want to go that path, uh, to do that.
So, Mike, the police department, the police department doesn't have that service currently either.
They do not.
Okay.
And these, these guys cover everything.
Right.
Yeah, Rich, this would be, uh, this would be across, it's not just for hours, they, um, the company actually covers multiple, um, accounts, so that, that, uh, monthly fee is for multiple accounts, so that our police department will be included within that monthly fee, which is great.
Okay, I just wasn't sure if LawSoft was doing something, but apparently they're not, so yes, that makes it even more important.
Yeah, good question, though.
Uh, the other thing I had a question, well, the other thing where the budget, uh, is being prepared right now through our finance department, the auditors are in there right now, so hopefully within the next week or two, we'll be able to sit down with the budget committee, which is, uh, Drew, Rich and John, uh, the model that is, uh, sit down, present it to you guys, uh, Uh, sit down, present it to you guys, uh, and then, and then take a look at it, whatever we're gonna do with it, and then go ahead and bring it to the council. Uh, hopefully in the next, maybe in the next month and a half or so to the council for introduction. Uh, and then the last thing I have here is the public events. Uh, I know there's a lot of them have been canceled, I just need to make sure that we're on top of that, cause I need to get banners, uh, DPW has to get. Dates for banners made if we're gonna have certain public events. Uh, so I'd just like to sit down with maybe you, Councilwoman Hudson, I think you might be with public events. And, and just go through what it is we want to, uh, cancel or not cancel at this point in time.
Yeah, I'm muted.
Sorry, everybody, uh, yeah, we have, uh, definitely canceled the, um, Easter egg hunt.
And fishing.
And while the fishing's not canceled, we're just pushing the fishing. Right, and then that date will be announced, I, I think John's gonna look, John Demoto will be looking into, um. Filling with the fish, doing that whole thing and, um. And let's see, recycling, we'll be continuing the date that we have it, which is on the, uh, town website and it's also on the Facebook page.
Uh. Cleanup day?
Cleanup day, we are going to continue on the date that we have scheduled. Um, we're gonna be sitting down with Public Events Committee and figuring out a, um. Kind of a different way to do it, I think the easiest thing that we're gonna do is just, um, have organizations go off to separate sites. We'll have one person from the organization come and pick up supplies, and then that same person can return the supplies, everything will get wiped down. Um, so it'll just be handled a little differently and, um, that will be announced after the committee meets. And I think I don't wanna get too further into the public events for the rest of the year, because, um. I, I, I do believe that the governor will be changing restrictions shortly. And as they start changing restrictions, we may wanna, you know, change and complete some of our public events, so.
Okay.
Yeah, we are currently scheduled for fireworks, right, might we book them?
Yes, we are, and a rain day, yep. And I can change, he just wanted a date, and if it changes like we did last year, there's no, no cancellation fees to us, he just wants to get it on the record with his, his company, so. Uh, I know, Rich and I and John have a, uh, a white collar negotiation meeting tomorrow, so hopefully we can finalize that. Pretty soon and bring it to the council, either in the next meeting or the meeting after for approval. And then the last thing is, uh, the mayor and I are meeting with the new superintendent of schools tomorrow, just to meet and greet. Uh, see what he could do for him, what he can do for us, uh. As we're all kinda new in our positions, so, that's it, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, uh, some of the other things that are going on, the Rose Committee is trying to pick a date. So that'll be coming out hopefully shortly, they throw some dates out there so they can meet and then we can go through that process and see their recommendations. So that hopefully by our next meeting, we'll have some answers for, for that. Um, Mike spoke about a lot of things that were involved in together, so I'm not gonna just rehash all that. Um. The vaccines, I guess everybody's probably been watching what has been going on, um, I guess the news, I know if you saw the news from, uh, President Biden today that. The vaccines for teachers and anybody that has to do with, I guess, kids in school, he wants to have them, the country done by the end of March. That's pretty aggressive, um, cause I guess with the controversy between the teachers and the unions, we'll get into that. But I think it's a good thing that they're trying to get it done sooner than later. We are getting a lot of phone calls from our seniors that are having a hard time registering, whether they don't have computers. Or they just can't get through on the phone, I brought that up on a call yesterday, uh, that I was on, uh, the governor's call. And they are trying to get more phone numbers, hotline phone numbers, so people can have an easier time. There is one town down in South Jersey that is being more proactive, they started, uh. Uh, a team in their own town, so the seniors can come to them that can't work computers, and they have people within their town that will register. At least get them registered in the system for their shot, so I thought that was pretty good, so, um. Um, maybe that's something we can think about, cause Bree gets calls, I think on a daily basis, people are getting frustrated because they can't get in. Um, and get their appointments. You know, I guess with Johnson and Johnson and Mark today, I guess there's coming out with the other shop, Drew, you probably know more about this than, than I do, I don't know if you heard about that.
Yeah, Mark is actually gonna help them accelerate their production, so, so J and J, um, o- owns the, the vaccine. But their, their capacity is such that they're gonna bring in, uh, you know, one of their major competitors and, and work together, uh, to really ramp up production. Okay. And, and I, I share your optimism, um, as someone who's gone through the vac- vaccine process. Uh, it's lengthy and it's cumbersome right now, with J and J, i- it's, it's a one-shot deal. Um, you know, I, I envision a, 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 a fast food line, right, of just people lined up, so all of those people that are frustrated. That can't either get an appointment, or they do get one that's canceled. Uh, I, I personally believe my thoughts, that, that's gonna subside quickly, I really do.
I, I did make a recommendation that maybe they need to go to the local level, seems when we get things on our lap. Of magnitude like that, we can get it done quicker and set up sites. Um, through our Board of Health, get people in here, get the shots to us. So instead of doing, them doing a, a ton of people in one spot, we can take care of Bloomingdale and our seniors right here. I don't know if that'll go anywhere, but, you know, we do the flu shot in town. I just don't think it's that difficult, provided we can get the, the equipment and the shot to do, especially to. J and J, since it's, it's regular refrigeration, it's not like the other ones, so. I'm sure there'll be more to come on the news, whatever you see bolted internet, it's, it's, there's stuff out there every single day. So that's pretty much all I have, Bree?
Can I just give an update to that also, John?
Sure.
Because, um, we actually did have some questions, um, coming into. Um, to me through Facebook, people asking questions as to who now, uh, the governor has expanded, so March fifteenth. Um, the ranks of those eligible, it would be, uh, pre-K through twelve grade educators and support staff. Um, childcare workers in licensed and registered settings, public and local transportation workers, including bus, taxi. Rideshare airport, New Jersey Transit, New Jersey Motor Ve- Motor Vehicle Commission staff. Public safety workers who are not sworn law enforcement or fire professionals, including probation officers, fire safety inspectors. Margaret Fine, Mark, migrant farm workers, members of tribal communities. And individuals experienced homelessness and those living in shelter, including domestic violence shelters. So that is March fifteenth.
And then there's another one on the twenty ninth?
Yes, the one on the twenty ninth then will be. Um, frontline essential workers in the following categories will be eligible for vaccination, food production, agri- agriculture, food distribution. Elder care and support, warehousing and logistics, social services support staff. Elections personnel, hospitality, medical supply chain, postal and shipping services, clergy and judicial system. So that will start on the twenty ninth then.
Yes, but right now that all means that they can go in and register and try to get an appointment, it's not like the first round where. I, I can just tell you from the, the, the fire end of it, um, it was just a place where we went and you registered right there and you got your first shot.
Hmm.
Um, I don't think that's gonna happen, that was one of the other questions, that's not happening, uh, uh, on the fifteenth. We can start going in and getting their appointment for that specific groups, starting on the fifteenth. But the way the president said, teachers are gonna go right in starting in March, so I hope he's as aggressive as he wants to be, that would be a great thing. So, okay. Um, Bree, do you have anything?
Nothing to report, thank you.
Dawn Sullivan?
Nothing to report tonight.
Okay. Okay. Um. Resolution number twenty twenty-one, three dot one. To twenty twenty-one, three dot two, to consent agenda, have a motion to accept a consent agenda.
So moved?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay. Okay, introduction of new business. Adoption Resolution number twenty twenty-one, three dot three, Landscape Fertilization Service to, uh, True Green. Uh, which is through the, the co-op, it's at a Somerset. Um, what this is, and we can also pretty much note, um, be aware of this, um, the direction that we're gonna go into to take care of our fields. And maintaining them with, uh, fertilization and I think it's six, it's a six treatment, um.
Yep.
Process.
Includes grub, grub, grub control and fungicide for deleisure, uh, no pesticides, it's not pesticides at all involved with this.
Right, which we cannot, we cannot spray pesticides near a score on regular fields anyway. Um, we believe. We had a, a, a company before called Organic. Um.
Grow, Go Organic.
Go organic, if they were. If I, if I remember correctly, if I'm wrong, they were ten thousand just for the Bergen School, Mike?
Yep.
Right?
Yep, it's just under ten.
Right, this company here, right, this is ninety-six hundred, this is gonna take care of Walter T. front and back. Martha.
The entire, yep, yep.
Firehouse on Union Ave. Um, Building Department. Borough Hall, Chief's Office, Sloan Park, Deleisure, and that's it, right?
That's it.
So for what we were paying less, we're getting more and get all these other areas. Complete, so it's a huge savings to the borough, cause we were paying Grow Organic to do one field. And then we were playing, paying another individual to do the other fields, and we were buying the supplies for the other fields. Now this, this company is doing everything, supplying everything, so it's a huge savings to the borough.
And we were also applying some of that, um, with our own DPW staff on overtime, so there's also that savings.
Correct. Okay, Kevin, motion on the floor to accept. Resolution twenty twenty-one, three dot three.
So moved?
Second?
Okay, we have roll call for this, Bree?
Yes, Delaripa?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Julen?
Yes.
Yasi?
Yes.
Tomato?
Yes. Okay. Um, item B, Resolution twenty twenty-one, three dot four, um, proximity cards readers and remote access system for. Sonatrol at Hunter County Cooperative, um, as you know, through the CARES Act, we all have our, um. Access cards, this is an access card system, um, that we're doing through the CARES Act, this is just to solidify that. And it's be paid through the CARES Act. Have a motion on the floor to accept that Resolution B.
Summer.
Second.
Okay, roll call.
Oh, sorry.
Sorry, I just have a quick question on that one, everything being remote and, and just insulated from all of our facilities, is the project done? Or? Are we getting our cards soon, where, where are we with the project?
Um, do you have your card?
I do not.
Okay, you have to go through, Frank Newburger is the one that's, um, handling the cards.
I took my picture.
Okay, so you, did he give you a code to get in?
Not yet, no.
Okay, so you need to get a hold of Frank, and Mike can do that for you.
I get a hold of Frank, it might be in your mailbox, I don't know.
I was gonna say, it might be in your mailbox, I'm not sure.
Yeah, tru- truth be told, guys, I have not been to Borough Hall in, in, in a long time, so it may be, I'll, I'll swing, I'll swing by on, on.
You won't be able to get in without your card.
Yeah, that's what the problem was, it's a.
We'll find it for you.
I want the combination in the safe thing. I'll throw it out the window.
We have a meeting tomorrow, right, we have a meeting tomorrow, so you'll be there tomorrow?
Yeah, tomorrow night.
Okay, yeah, it's a card access, everybody's supposed to have it, John, you need to get yours, I know you have the PIN number, but you need to get down there, get your picture taken and get your card. Um, what's really nice about this whole system that we're doing, other than, um, we could just walk in the building and swipe and go in. It's now we have control of who goes in and who's going out, so if there is an issue COVID-wise, we have tracking. So if somebody has tests positive and we don't know who was around that person, we can just go right back into the system and say, okay. A, B, and C, you were there, we've got to make sure you're okay, so that was the whole reason, um, behind this. Um, this system, and it's been working really well, the automatic door openers in the library are working, so once we open up Borough Hall. In which I, we should have had this a long time ago, even before this for, for handicaps, when you walk up to the one door on one side, you stand there, the door opened by itself, you can walk in, not touch anything. So it, it's, it's really a good thing. Um, to have this, so with saying that, can we do a roll call, please?
Yeah, sorry about that, thank you.
That's okay.
Graziano?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Julen?
Yes.
Yasi?
Yes.
Tomato?
Yes.
Delaripa?
Yes.
Okay. Item C, Resolution twenty twenty-one, three point five, declare an emergency for rock salt through Brainstone Industries. Um, have a motion on the floor to accept this.
So moved?
Seconded.
Need a second, okay, just a little bit about this, um, Mike, you wanna touch base on this, you probably.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
So we, we're in two co-ops, Morris County and Passaic County, uh, and trying to get salt, and there were issues down at the dock. Uh, where nobody's able to get salt, and then with Texas and everything else around the nation having issues, salt was going everywhere but our own backyard here. Uh, so we had to go to Brain, uh, supply to pick up salt for probably, uh, a forty percent markup in price. Uh, but our contract with the Morris County Co-op is that they will pick up the difference in the costs, uh, so Fred's office is aware of that and we're working on that. Uh, so it's in the forefront, so we have to apply for the emergency, we have to pay for the salt we got from Brain. But rest assured, we're gonna go back after that profit or that, that difference, uh, between what we would have got with the co-op and what we ended up paying with Brain. Uh, and then get refunded for that, so.
Okay. Any questions regarding that, towards me and Mike? If not, roll call, please.
Hudson?
Yes.
Julen?
Uh, yes.
Yasi?
Yes.
Tomato?
Yes.
Delaripa?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Okay. Item D, um, introduction of ordinance, seven dash two zero two one, amending chapter fifteen, property maintenance. Unsolicited writ materials. Um. There's actually on Facebook, you see, the, the papers ought to be thrown in your driveway. We've been getting numerous complaints and they usually wind up in a road somewhere. I can tell you, I've been walking past houses, I'll see three and four, three in people's driveways, um, smashed in the middle of the road. So people are not picking them up, cause they basically don't want it. Um, residents have an option, they can notify our property maintenance, Mark Redfield, and he will take their address and have them removed from our list. I did that for myself and it stopped coming. But to, to handle this townwide, not that we want to stop, cause some people do like it. We want to put in our ordinance that it has to be delivered to their front porch, no more throwing out the window, landing anywhere. So we want to be specific on where these newspapers or any type of delivery like this. That will land into a place, whether it's put in a slot in a door, in between a door. On their front porch, it cannot be put in a mailbox, that's against the post office rules. Um, there are some mailboxes that will have an attachment to it for a newspaper, it could be slid in there, but they will no longer be allowed to be thrown. Into somebody's driveway on their, their sidewalk into the street. Um, I think this is a good thing, it'll make the town clean up a little bit. Um, and actually the company that does it is pretty good, if you have a problem, they'll send somebody out to pick them all up, but we can, we can avoid all this by having delivered properly. Um, so that's what this is about.
Yeah, your ordinance review committee did a, uh, bill graph, uh, went out and, and looked at case law and, and, and got an ordinance that stood up to, uh. Supreme Court, I think it was in Kentucky, I think he said it was, uh, where, cause obviously you can't. You can't not, you can't stop the press from coming as the, uh, First Amendment right, but this was a way around that, uh, that they saw, so you can limit where they can actually place it on your property. So that's the reason behind this, we're hoping it discourages the company and, cause it's gonna be enough cost for them to send somebody to walk around and place these things that. They just say goodbye to Bloomingdale and don't ever do it anymore type thing.
You know, the, the, it's funny about it, cause when you, when I read things through Facebook, people complaining and, and I did put up there that it was, uh. You know, their, their right to do this, the First Amendment, um, and you don't realize that, because it's really coupons and other things.
Yep.
It is, it is a, a right of a newspaper, be, you know, it just is what it is. Um, so.
And just, uh, John, we, we did add in a section.
That's right.
That, um, if a resident contacts the publisher and says they no longer want these materials. And the publisher continues to send them, they can notify the town, the borough and that's a violation of the statute. And I think we start at two hundred dollars, um, for a violation and each instance would be another violation, so another two hundred dollar. Um, fine, so hopefully it'll discourage people, um. E- encourage people to contact the publishers and discourage the publishers from continuing once they have been co- contacted.
Okay. Any other discussion about this, this is just introduction? We're good, Bree?
Um, I'll just need a motion to read it by title and then, John, you can set.
Um I'll just need a motion to read it by title and then, John, you can set the uh public hearing and adoption for March sixteenth.
Okay, can I a motion to read by title, please?
So moved?
Second.
An ordinance in the borough of Bloomingdale County of Passaic, State of New Jersey, amending chapter fifteen, property maintenance of the Code of the Borough of Bloomingdale to add a new section fifteen dash eighteen entitled unsolicited written materials. So again, the second and final reading will be on March sixteenth.
Okay, thanks. Okay, item A, ordinance number eight dash two zero two one, Capitol ordinance, PD body cameras. Um Public Safety Committee met with the chief and there's um he has to go out and purchase new body cameras for all of his men by, I think it's June fifth, the one, if I remember correctly. We have to have this in place?
I believe so.
Okay.
And and just so everyone understands, that is state law.
Yes. Yeah, this is a mandate by the state um that they have to go out and purchase, I think he's getting twenty body cameras, I believe, and that will cover everybody with a couple spares. Um we are, we have money and uh capital surplus to pay for this. It's approximately thirty-two thousand dollars for this. On the good side is there's going, there's a grant for this. Okay, but we cannot get that money yet because the state does not know how they're gonna distribute it. It's not in place yet, but it will be. So we're gonna foot the money in the beginning of it and then we will be reimbursed once that money is allocated to each municipality to reimburse everybody for these cameras. But we have to put this in the form of an ordinance because they have to do this. So could I have a motion on the floor to read this by title?
So moved?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay, Bree?
An ordinance appropriating thirty-two thousand available from the General Capital Surplus Fund to provide for the purchase of body cameras for the police department described herein and by the Borough of Bloomingdale and the County of Passaic, State of New Jersey. Um and John, the second and final reading will also be on March sixteenth and adoption.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Um before we go into late public comment, you guys all received an email from me regarding the new law against the marijuana law. Please read through that because we will discuss that on at our next meeting in March sixteenth. We just make sure that's on the on the agenda for discussion. Um long story short, we have to come up with a process for our town on how we want to handle this. We have a hundred and eighty days to put this into effect, correct, Mike? All right, so we need to get on that. Fred's office will be involved in this. I know he he sent that last, the stuff I sent you out. Um it's real interesting reading. If you really want to know the real depth of it, um contact the chief. He's very passionate about. There's some stuff in there which I have no idea how it 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 it's in there, but please read it and we'll discuss it at our at our next meeting. Okay. Um tell a motion going to late public comment?
So moved?
Second.
Go ahead.
We had it. Do we have a second public hearing? Public?
Well, one's, this is to talk about anything, right?
Yeah, this is late public.
This is late.
Okay. No, I thought it was it was closed session, okay?
No. Uh we have a motion, a second, and in all favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay, anybody willing, wanting to speak, please raise your hand or press not.
I'm gonna get to raise a hand just if you scroll over reactions on your computer. Uh it's one of those options. Just click on any of them. Some people had a tough time figuring out what's raised hands.
I don't see any hands raised. Um and I don't have any messages.
Okay.
I don't believe there's any comments.
Okay, motion to close late public comment?
So moved?
Second.
Okay, all favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay, we do have one um matter of contract negotiations in executive session. There will be no action taken afterwards.
Now we have a hand up. I know that we closed.
Jen, oh, go ahead. It's okay.
Okay.
Do we need to reopen or we good? I'm sorry, what was that, Tom?
I'm sorry.
Okay, move to reopen?
I need a second to reopen. All favor?
Aye.
Go ahead.
Up from Tom Barati?
Tom had
Take it off.
I I got it now. Sorry about that. I have a question regarding this seven dollar quarterly fee for the uh meters. I'm requesting again that it be made a line item. That that those dollars go into a specific line for the meters like we did a couple of years ago. I think it's only fair for the people who pay for meters and pay for water. And I would appreciate it if the council would consider doing this, please.
And we'll talk about it. Okay, thank you, Jen.
Can I just have name and address for the recording?
Yes, Jen Altfield, Seventeen Cedar Street, Bloomingdale, New Jersey.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Can I just add to that? Because I don't know if anyone saw um Tom Barati's message that he left. Did anyone see that? It says if anyone has
I did see, but I don't know if any of the public did.
I'm gonna read it just so everyone can hear. It says, this is from our town engineer. He said, if anyone from Hamilton Street has any questions about the project, please feel free to email. This says TAB, T A B, at DarmoFalki, D A R M O F A L S K I dot com or call nine seven three eight three five eight three zero zero, extension one twelve. And that's to contact Tom Barati, our town engineer regarding the Hamilton, Hamilton Street project.
Okay, and that's also in the letter that we
Anyone can
That's also the letter that we sent out. Right, Bree? That's on the letter we sent out?
It is.
Information, okay. But if there's somebody doesn't have that letter anymore, if you can't remember, please, please call Borough Hall. We will get you that information. Okay.
You have to make a motion to close.
Okay.
So moved?
Have a have a motion again, pose a late, late public comment.
Delaripa and Gassy.
Yeah, all in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
Great. And like I said before, we do have one matter of contract negotiations. So we know action taken afterwards. Our next meeting will be March sixteenth, two thousand twenty-one, seven PM, and then our next workshop will be April sixth, two thousand twenty-one to seven PM. Okay.
Okay, just
A motion to go into executive session, please?
So moved?
One more.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed?
Nope.
I wouldn't think so.